At this time, we'll take Clerk Magallanes. Can we do roll call, please?
Chair Henderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Lee's absent. Vice, I'm sorry. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Lujan.
Here.
Commissioner Olivares.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, will you please rise and we'll have Commissioner Lujan lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'll face the flag, right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now is the time for public participation on items listed on the consent calendar. Each speaker is allotted two minutes. Clerk Magallanes, do we have any speaker cards for the consent calendar?
We do not, but we will read the public comment rules at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of this body is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's meeting, and this meeting body encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the body must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of this body's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the body. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with members of this body or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the members of this body, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and members of this meeting body, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Very good. Okay, all matters listed under the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion unless items are polled by commissioners. Waiver of the full reading of resolutions to be considered and voted on at this meeting allows us for reading of the entire title in lieu of reciting the entire text. Commissioners, we'd like to poll any items from the consent calendar at this time. No. Commissioners, can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
And make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Lujan, a second from Commissioner Olivares. Please show your vote. Is there, we're doing a voice vote? Oh, there we go. Okay. Let the record show, motion passes with four yes votes. Okay, we are on to item number six, public hearings. So I'm assuming all of these nice-looking folks are here tonight for item 6C. So in consideration of your time, how about we make a motion? Would one of you like to make a motion to move item 6C to the front of the pack so we can respect these folks' time?
I'll motion it.
I second that.
All right, I got a motion from Commissioner Jones, a second from Commissioner Lujan, all in favor of moving 6C to next. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need a, that's good. All right. All right, so on to 6C. Okay. Clerk Magallanes, would you like to read the description of 6C?
So item 6C is to adopt resolution number PC 2024-027, and we will waive the reading of the full text.
Okay. Planning Manager Magallanes, do you have a presentation for us tonight?
Magaña.
Magaña, I'm sorry. Magaña. That "ñ" closed me off every time. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, thank you. The project before you is the Antelope Valley Commerce Center specific plan, sorry, we just call it AVCC, which includes a request for the approval of a specific plan, a general plan amendment, a zone change, tentative track map, site plan review, and a development agreement. The project encompasses a site totaling 433 acres on four undeveloped parcels located east of Sierra Highway and south of Calamoue, also known as West Avenue M. The specific plan would allow for a maximum of 8.3 million square feet of building footprint to be comprised of 8.2 million square feet of industrial and 60,000 square feet of commercial uses. Associated improvements to the project site would include, but are not limited to, paved roads, paved parking areas, drive aisles, truck courts, utility infrastructure, landscaping, water quality basins, signage, lighting, property walls, gates, and fencing. The project will be built in four phases and will allow up to 8.2 million square feet of industrial buildings on 378 acres, 60,000 square feet of commercial development on seven acres, 29.3 acres of open space preserved for Joshua Tree conservation and for use as a detention basin, and 18.2 acres of roadway. The entitlements for Phase One are proposed in conjunction with this request and include construction of six industrial buildings totaling 2.3 million square feet, along with associated improvements necessary to support the development of this portion of the site. Phase One of the project will consist of six industrial buildings of various sizes. All of the buildings will feature the same design and architectural features utilizing various paint colors, building materials, and landscaping with truck courts positioned away from the primary roadways. I do want to point out that you did receive a memo tonight at the dais amending some of the conditions of approval, and I want to let you know that traffic, engineering, so city staff and the applicant worked through these, and they have also agreed to these conditions. So if there's any questions on that, myself, city staff, or the applicant can answer any of those questions. With that, staff recommends approval of this project, and we are available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Magaña. Okay, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker slips?
We do.
Okay. Who do we have first?
I'd like to call up George Bali.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is George Bali. I'm here representing UA Local 761 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. We support this project, and your yes votes today shows that you support us and the city of Palmdale as a whole. This project allows our hard-working men and women to advance their careers while earning middle-class wages and benefits. Most importantly, the developer has made a pledge to hire local and skilled construction workforce members to build their vision, ensuring a high-quality project and enshrining the community's basic economic needs by supporting the people all around. This project is great for our community, and we strongly urge you to approve it with your yes votes today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any more speaker slips?
We have Mr. Ralph Velador.
Good evening, Chair Henderson and Planning Commission. My name is Ralph Velador, and these things come for you, when they do, are very, very important to workers like ourselves. As you see here, these are all super commuters that have to drive down the hill every day to go to work. And when we have an opportunity for a developer to come up here like Covington and to be able to offer those good jobs and hire those contractors that pay those good wages to workers, it's a win not only for us, but also for the community, because those dollars that are paid are put right back in our community, recycled into different taxes that are able to put programs together here in town. I myself, I've been here for 22 years in Palmdale, and I've served at different positions on Planning Commission with you, Mr. Henderson, at one time, and on the school board now. And I'm able to do that because I don't have to drive down the hill every single day. I do a lot, but if there's more opportunity for these folks to stay up here and work, they'll be able to participate more in the community. This developer has hired contractors, like I say, like the last gentleman said as well, that pay good wages, benefit wages with pensions, health and welfare plans, that they're able to put their kids in school and be able to buy them clothes so they can feel good about themselves. They're able to take them to the doctor when they get sick. Those are really important things, and able to afford for them to go to college. These jobs are super important for us, and for that, I implore you to vote yes on this so we can keep on working in our community, and these folks can keep their kids here as well and not have to move down the hill, stay here and be a good part of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next?
Mr. Herbert Hardy? I hope I said that right.
How you guys doing, Commissioners? My name is Herbert Hardy, and I'm a representative with the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters, and just like my brothers behind us stated, we're in full support of this project. The developer has committed to hiring a local workforce. It's going to give our members the opportunity to work local, that way they'll be able to take their kids to school, pick them up. And I know for me, my kids are eight and five, and I haven't had the opportunity to put them to bed, and it's going to allow our members to do that. So we're in full support of this project, and we ask for your yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next?
Next speaker is Louresa Cuñones.
Actually, I need to do B, not C.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we have no more speaker cards.
Okey-dokey. All right, so then I guess we'll close the public hearing. You guys are preaching to the choir here. We want that project to come just as much as you do, but we appreciate you coming because we're usually here alone, so we like to have company once in a while. Nice to have an audience. Okay, Commissioners, any discussion? Yay, nay? I'm just curious to staff. We are adjacent to Air Force Plant 42. Do we talk with Department of Defense, and do they have any issues with flyover space or anything like that?
So as part of our development advisory board process, we consult with Plant 42, and they have been involved in this process from the very beginning, and we've been working with them to be good neighbors and good partners.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're the only people that I would know that would ever have any beef with it.
Good question.
But all the rest of us are anxious to see it happening, so if we approve this, when are you guys going to start building?
Right away.
All right, that's what I like to hear. Okay, no discussion? Okay, can I get a motion and a second?
A motion.
Okay, I got a motion from Commissioner Jones, a second from Commissioner Lujan. Please show your vote.
That's it.
Let the record show, motion passes with four yes votes. Congratulations. We're looking forward to seeing those buildings go up.
Yes.
Great, thank you for coming.
6B.
Okay.
Oh, no, 6A. Which is?
Who'd you want to talk to? Oh.
It's for me after. After, it's for after.
Cold? All right. Are we ready? All right, we'll go to item 6A on the agenda. Clerk Magallanes, can you please read the description?
Item 6A is to adopt resolution number PC 2024-026.
Okay, presentation by Planning Manager Brenda Magaña.
Yes, thank you. You'll be seeing a lot of me tonight.
All right.
The item before you is a request for a variance to allow the installation of an onsite wastewater treatment facility to facilitate the construction of a single-family residence on a vacant lot located on the northeast corner of Pere Blossom Highway and 60th Street East. So to provide some context, our current general plan does not allow for the installation of onsite wastewater treatment facilities for properties under one acre. This policy encourages development to connect to the sewer, the nearest wastewater connection whenever feasible. In this case, the nearest connection is over a mile away east of the site, and granting the variance will allow the property owner to build a single-family residence in an area that has large rural lots and has been difficult to develop because of this policy. The property is surrounded by other single-family residences, and granting the variance will not constitute any special privilege that other property owners do not already have. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt resolution number PC 2024-026. I'm available for any questions.
Okey-dokey. It's a very fancy name they have for a septic tank, right?
Yes. It's the proper term.
Oh, it is? I did not know that. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker slips?
We do. We have the applicant here.
Okay, would you like to speak?
Do you want to wait to see if you have any questions for them?
Oh. Questions for?
The applicant. Do you have questions for the applicant?
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? No questions? Okay. So then we don't need a speaker? All right, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Commissioners, any discussion? No? 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 Okay, then Commissioners, can I have a motion and a second to adopt item 6A? Okay, I have a, I have a motion and a second. Please show your vote.
Was that Olivares and Lujan?
That was Olivares and Lujan, correct. A motion from Olivares and a second from Commissioner Lujan.
Okay. Then start voting.
Okay. Let the record show, motion passes with four yes votes. All right. Now we'll move on to item 6B. Clerk Magallanes, would you like to read item 6B?
Item 6B is to adopt resolution number PC 2024-024.
We see you again, Ms.
Yes.
Magaña.
The item, yes. The item before you is a request for a two-year time extension and a major modification to phase the map into four separate phases. The project site is located within the Rancho Vista specific plan. The tentative map was originally approved in 2006 and since then has received time extensions exercised by the city and authorized by the state. You received a memo on this item informing you of Assembly Bill 2927, which extends the life of this map by 18 months. If approved, we will update the staff report and resolution to include AB 2927 and the revised expiration date of the map. Approval of this project is beneficial to Palmdale residents because it will facilitate the development of 65 new residences in one detention basin. Aside from the phasing of the map, there are no modifications to the map as originally approved. Staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt resolution PC number 2024-024, recommending city council approval of this project as amended. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have speaker slips for item 6B?
We do not have speaker, oh, I'm sorry, we do have speaker slips. We have Louresa Cuñones.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So I live on Vista Point Way, which is the part of the tract that is impacted as it's being built, and I have a few concerns, and so I just wanted to list them. One is that the signage for the tract was put only on our street. However, it's going to impact the entire tract itself, so I feel like maybe notification. I talked to other neighbors, they weren't informed necessarily. I know a mailing went out. I received the mailing. Other people I spoke to have not received the mailing. Also, there was a fire recently in May at the top by the aqueduct, which then pushed down into the tract, and I'm concerned about fire safety. LA County has now created that space to be high-fire zone. We have a $250 additional parcel tax yearly to our housing tract. We also, it's very hard to find fire insurance because I've been dropped two times, and so it's quite expensive, so that's also an impact on this project. Currently, I have physically seen a young bobcat as well as a lion cub in that area. There are over 3,000 Joshua trees in that area, not that specific site, but in that area, I would say that maybe it should be reevaluated. The last time it was looked at was 2006. Those Joshua trees have not changed, but the area, it will be impacted by that. I know that there was an act created recently called the Western Joshua Tree Conservation Act in 2023, and there are more than 10 Joshua trees in that area. So also, the impact of the roundabouts, as well as traffic. Rancho Vista already has a 60 mile an hour speed limit. Going down it, it's very hard to exit. The original plan for that area has changed. We have a neighborhood Walmart. We have a senior living community. There are many different things than from the original impact, so I just wanted to bring those up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
We do have Mr. Steve Dunlop.
Yeah, I'm going to respectfully decline. I don't have any more words after her.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and if we have no more speakers, anybody else want to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Okay, so we have some issues, staff? One of them was traffic. Are we anticipating any, any maybe signal lights coming in the future in that area on Rancho Vista Boulevard that could help with traffic?
I will defer to Jay, our engineering manager, traffic engineering manager.
Can you pull up the map?
Sure. Brenda, you have the, did you want to pull up the map?
Do we have the overview of that map? There's no traffic signal in there. We do have high speeds on Rancho Vista. I concur, that's an issue throughout the entire city of Palmdale, and the number-one thing and goal I had when I came here three years ago was to do everything I could to lower those speeds, especially when it's near parks or schools and shopping centers and certain uses. Speeds are set by California law that we have to set at 85% of the driving public, and so every five to seven years, we have to go out and do a radar speed study of how fast people drive when there's no congestion. So they go drive slower if it's congested in the AM or PM peak, but we have to get free-flow speed, and then the speed limit that we post has to be based on that. And if it's not based on that, we can't have law enforcement enforce the posted speed limit. So this project will not impact speeds on Rancho Vista. It's designed so that the whole subdivision that exists was designed with the plan to always build this portion, so I don't see any significant traffic impacts associated with this. Of course, anytime you build new, any development, it adds traffic, but we need more housing in the city, and we need the housing to comply with the housing element and other things, and I don't see any significant traffic impacts associated with it.
Do we anticipate any signal lights coming in the future, let's say between 30th and coming up that turn there?
I know, how far are we from the Vaughn Shopping Center there?
Pretty close, right by Vaughn's, pretty close to Vaughn's.
There is one more signal planned on Rancho Vista as you leave from downtown headed northwest, and that might be served by this. I haven't looked at the map, and I wasn't prepared for this specific project when I came.
So there's another housing tract just south of that?
Yeah, it's the one just south. We'll have, we'll have.
That will, will there be a traffic light for that one?
Yes. And that project is conditioned to construct a raised median on Rancho Vista Boulevard to fix some of the safety issues we've had at the driveways there.
Do we have a raised median coming and a signal light?
Correct.
Track?
For the development south of this subdivision.
Directly south of that?
Just southeast of there, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Now, did you say that they do a study of how fast the cars are going, and then that's how they set the speed limit?
Yeah.
Because the cars are all hauling down that street pretty fast.
A year ago, approximately, the state legislature passed some legislation to give us a five to 10 mile leeway, so I recently bought a home out in Anna Vereda. The speed was 65 miles an hour on the road leading to my house, and I like to bike. If I bike down that road, I have a two-foot shoulder, and I'm right next to cars going 75 to 85 miles an hour because they go 10 miles over the speed limit. So those are issues, but we can't, we have to follow state law or we can't enforce the speed limit.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. We also had concerns about the signage and the mailings to the folks that are living adjacent to theirs. Are a certain distance where neighbors will get mailings notifying them of development?
Yes, and those were sent out, and there was also a sign on the actual property.
Okay. And then Joshua trees, there's a law that governs what we do with the Joshua trees, right? What do they pay?
Correct.
They pay money?
Correct, so California Department Fish and Wildlife, the applicant will be required to obtain an incidental take permit through them and work through that process with them.
Okey-dokey. Any Commissioners have any more questions?
Yes, it was brought up about fire safety. Are there any precautions for fire safety in that area?
So once there's a builder, the properties will have to be, will have to meet the fire code, so that will be taken care of at that time.
Got it, and are there any concerns that, I mean, is there anything that could be done about the wildlife? I mean, I know that it's kind of coming from probably Bouquet Canyon, and I know sometimes with constructions, animals move, you know, but is there anything that could be done about that or any safety precautions in building this property?
So the project is conditioned to give us nesting bird surveys prior to any kind of grading, so they do do a survey of the land beforehand. If there's issues with bobcats and such, we can add that as something that we look out for.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion with the Commissioners? Any other questions? All right, can I get a motion and a second for item 6B?
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion from Commissioner Olivares and a second from Commissioner Jones. Please show your vote. Let the record show, motion passes with four yes votes. Okay, we are on to item number seven. Now is the time for public participation on items not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be allotted two minutes total. Clerk Magallanes, do we have any non-agendized items speaker slips?
We do not.
We do not? Okay, on to item number eight, staff communications. Clerk Magallanes, do we have any speaker card? Oh, never mind. Staff, do you have any updates for the Commission?
Well, first and foremost, I do want to say thank you to each and every one of you. We completed 2024, and we had very many good and successful meetings, so I appreciate all of your help through getting through this year. I do want to let you know that we do have an exciting 2025 already in the books. I am already...
Do we have... Next item is Commissioner Reports. Does Commissioners have anything to report?
I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but as Planning Commissioner and Art Commissioner, I just wanted to say, if you get a chance, especially even leaving tonight, make sure that you check out the new Palmdale Playhouse mural. I'm part of the art commission, and that is a mural that we just revealed today. It's absolutely beautiful, very wonderful, and if you go out this side of the Christmas lights and go straight, it's right there on 10th Street West, right at the playhouse to the left, and it's amazing.
Great. I was wondering, the second building that's going next to the Amaz... not the Amazon, the Trader Joe's building, what's the... What are we building next to the Trader Joe's building?
The second Trader Joe's building?
Oh, is that... It's two Trader Joe's?
It's all Trader Joe's.
Oh, it's all Trader Joe's? Oh, okay.
What? It's a freezer for Trader Joe's, but it's all related. It's one big project.
Oh, cool. Oh, that's big. All right. All right, okay. Any other comments, anything? Okay, then we are adjourned to the January 16, 2025, meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.